Good afternoon. I will call to order the March 6th meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as President of the Commission. I've joined today by Commissioners Cronser, Magrino, Slack, Sweezy, Lukey Pierre, Vreeland, and Rockwell. Our first item of business today is to approve the actions from the February 21st meeting. They have a motion to approve those actions. We have a motion and a second, all in favor? And that motion carries. Next, we will organize the agenda. You can find hard copies of the agenda in the hallway. We'll determine which items will be considered on consent, which we will discuss, and which will be continued to another meeting. So, starting at the top of the agenda, item one is Emily's Bed and Breakfast at 1507 Oak Park Avenue North. That's a conditional use permit for a bed and breakfast facility. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that? You'd like to speak on item one? All right, we can discuss item one. Item two is the downtown East Commons at 521 South Fourth Street and 425 Portland Avenue. That's a variance for signs. We'll continue that application to the March 20th meeting. Item three is the Estes Funeral Chapel at 2201 and 2215 Plymouth Avenue North and 1245 Penn Avenue North. Several applications for a new funeral home there. We'll discuss item three. Item four is the YMCA expansion and signage at 651 Niclet Mall. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? I will note that several of those applications have been withdrawn, so the staff recommendation has been revised to only recommend approval on the site plan. Review the applications related to the dynamic sign have been withdrawn. Again, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that? Item, seeing no one, we'll put item four on consent. Item five is Rosellas at 2700 Cedar Avenue South. Several applications for a new contractor's office there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item five? Seeing no one, we'll put that on consent. Item six is the MPS Adult Education and Transition Plus Building at 2005 through 2019 East Lake Street, 3013 through 3017 20th Avenue South, and 3008 through 3016 21st Avenue South. Several applications for a new education facility there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item six? Commissioner Slack, you'd like to discuss item six?
Just real quick.
All right. Oh, you'd just like to make a comment right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just based on a new item that we received as part of our packet, I'd like staff to just look into the memo that we received regarding bike racks, and that's it.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on item six? Seeing no one, we'll put that on consent. Item seven is the 212 James redevelopment at 212 James Avenue North and 208 through 226 Irving Avenue North. Several applications for a mixed-use complex there. We will continue item seven to the March 20th meeting, so if anyone was here for that, we will consider it on March 20th. Item eight is a zoning code text amendment related to board and commission stipends. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item eight? Seeing no one, we'll put that on consent. And finally, item nine is also a zoning code text amendment, and that relates to regulations related to fraternities and sororities. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item nine? All right, we can discuss item nine. So our agenda as amended is as follows. Items four, five, six, and eight will be on consent. We will discuss items one, three, and nine, and items two and seven will be continued. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? We have a motion and a second, all in favor? And that motion carries. Next, we can consider our Committee of the Whole consent agenda items, and Commissioner Slack?
Thank you, President Brown. There were six items that were considered at the Committee of the Whole from February 23rd, 2017. Item number one was a land sale, 1911 East Stately Street. Item number two was a land sale, 4108 Standish Avenue South. Item three was a land sale at 5960 Clinton Avenue South. Item number four was a land sales, series of land sales, 822 Elmwood Avenue North and 2709 through 2711 Third Street North. Item number five was land acquisition, 501 Fourth Avenue South. And item number six was a land sale at 415 Fifth Street South. The recommended motion for all those items was to approve the staff recommendation that the items were consistent with the Minneapolis plan.
All right, now I'll take that as a motion, finding those items consistent with the comprehensive plan. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second, all in favor? And that motion carries. Next, may I have a motion to continue items two and seven to the March 20th meeting? We have a motion and a second, all in favor? And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to the public hearing portion of our meeting, and first, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. Again, that is items four, five, six, and eight. Is anyone wishing to speak on items four, five, six, or eight? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? We have a motion and a second, all in favor? And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our items for discussion. We'll start with item one, 1507 Oak Park Avenue North, and staff is Nicholas Baker.
One moment, please. Evening, Chairman Commissioners. My name is Nicholas Baker, city planner with CPED. The item before you is a conditional use permit to open a bed and breakfast home at 1507 Oak Park Avenue North in the R4 Multiple Family District. This is a lot, about 13,000 square feet. The intersection of Oak Park and Irving has a designation of urban neighborhood in the long-range plan. Staff analyzed the application with regard to the six required conditional use permit findings, as well as the specific development standards for the opening of a bed and breakfast. And, let's see, I can show... Site is zoned R4, as you can see right there, and the location, as well as photos of the surrounding context. As I mentioned, staff analyzed this application with regard to the six required findings, as well as the specific development standards required. Staff found that the application met each of the six required findings, as well as the specific development standards required, and staff is recommending approval with one condition, that just being that the conditional use permit is reported within two years of approval. Do I have any questions?
All right. Are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Lukey Pierre?
Hi, this is kind of a, we don't see a lot of bed and breakfasts, so I'm sorry, I just have some questions. One would be what differentiates a bed and breakfast from a boarding house? And the second would be, is there any requirement for bathrooms count and bedroom count? Because any bed and breakfast I know has always had a bedroom or bathroom attached to each bedroom, but this one only has three bedrooms and two baths total. So I'm wondering how that all works, just from an educational standpoint for us.
That is not among the zoning requirements for a bed and breakfast.
And how does it differentiate it between that and a boarding house?
The, let's see if I can bring up the requirements.
And I assume, Mr. Baker, from a licensing standpoint, lodging-type license is required for a bed and breakfast versus a boarding house, which would be a rental license, so that would be one distinction.
Yes, it is also a specific bed and breakfast license. It's on page three of the staff report, the requirements for the specific development standards required for a bed and breakfast.
Are there any further questions of staff? Or Commissioner Lukey Pierre, you have your answer? All right, in that case, I will open the public hearing on this item. Is the applicant here? Yes, is there anything you would like to add to the staff presentation?
Other than what Nicholas said, there's nothing else. All the information is in the application.
Okay. And, okay, I believe we have at least one speaker here, and if you'd like to come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, that'd be great.
My name is Mary Britt, and I live at 1512 Eighth Avenue North, which is down the alley from that address. My first question is, is there a relationship between Nicholas Baker and Emily Baker Orr?
All right, Mr. Wittenberg?
Commissioners, I asked that question immediately when I assigned the project to Mr. Baker, and there's not a relationship.
My second, or some additional concerns are, it's, this house was, or was, the previous occupants for this house that lived there over 30 years, they were a single family, and it's, that home is really set up to be a single-family home. And I'm not sure what value will be added to the neighborhood. The house directly across the alley from this home was, has been a problem home for years, and there's a lot of traffic up and down the alley, and one of the reasons the previous occupants decided to sell and leave was because of the number of times their Sentry Link box was mowed over, the activities of all the times of the day and night, and their fence coming down. I noticed that there's a part of the fence that's down now, also at that, at this residence. But that problem house, there was a lot of, the sheriffs actually had to come and remove the individuals from that home. That's now been taken care of, and that house is being worked on, but it feels like we can't get the neighborhood back if now we're going to have a lot of traffic. There isn't really going to be good parking. There's a small, little park across the street from this residence, Oak Park Square. And I guess I'm wondering, is the intent to make it a bed and breakfast, or shouldn't the owner, is the owner going to live in the residence? I've talked to a number of our neighbors. They weren't able to make it today. One is elderly, one has been diagnosed with ALS and isn't able to make it, but we're just trying to make this a good neighborhood to live in, and it feels like we can't ever get things coordinated. Every time we make one step forward, then it's another surprise, but I don't know if the new owner intends to actually live in the home, or if that's a requirement, but so.
Okay, thank you. I might, I might just ask staff to clarify what exactly the arrangement is here, and how many units there are, what the traffic might look like.
That is among the requirements for operation of a bed and breakfast. The owner is required to maintain their primary residence at the address, and they also have to be residing onsite at the address at all times while the use is in operation. That will be required.
All right, thank you. Any further questions? And is, yeah, Commissioner Lukey Pierre?
Yeah, so I did just have a question, because one of the conditions that you put up, number four, is that it has to have a minimum of 2,000 square foot of habitable residential floor area. I can't figure out from the plans, because they're really not what we normally see for floor plans for a dwelling. It looks as though the floor plans don't actually sync up with the measurements for the houses that are given on their dimensioned site plan. It's actually a lot different, and even when I take the calculations, it doesn't top 2,000 for the habitable floor area. So can you explain how we established that that one was met? Because I don't see anything that would lead, that shows that that is being met, and I just wanted to make sure.
According to our property records, the habitable square footage was over 2,000 square feet.
Habitable or just total?
Habitable. So it did not include the unfinished basement.
So, okay, because I'm, it's just a two-story house, right?
Correct.
Because the floor plans don't add up to that, that they submitted, at least not from my calcs.
I based my calculations on our, the city's property records.
Okay.
Okay, are there any further questions? And is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we just have the one application before us, the conditional use permit. Are there any further questions, or would someone like to start us off with a motion? All right, Commissioner Vreeland has moved staff recommendation. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing no one, we have a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit, and clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Cronser?
Aye.
Lukey Pierre?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
Vreeland?
Aye.
It's 9-0.
All right, and that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item one. Our next item for discussion is item three, the Estes Funeral Chapel at 2201, 2215 Plymouth Avenue North. Staff is Ms. Sethar, and Commissioner Cronser, I understand you had a question or comment about this. Is there anything you in particular like staff to highlight?
I'm interested in the question of where the entrance from the public street is, is it Plymouth, is it Penn? I realize there's a BRT station being built, but I think that's what's on my mind.
Okay.
All right.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Just to kind of reorient everyone with the four corners of Penn and Plymouth Avenue. So last winter, the City Planning Commission approved the Thor development at the southeast corner of the intersection. Now we're looking at the southwest corner of the intersection, that's presently surface parking for the North Point Health and Wellness Center to the north of the site. In order to allow for the expansion of North Point, the applicant is proposing to relocate the existing Estes Funeral Home, which you see at the very top of that aerial photo, to the subject property. As proposed, the building would be located nearest the corner at Penn Avenue and Plymouth Avenue North, kind of nudged into the corner. There are required yards, this is ORR2, so there are required yards along both Plymouth Avenue and Penn Avenue North. So they're seeking variances to reduce those at staff's request, that they provide more of an urban location for the structure, and kind of nudge it into the corner. Initially, staff had indicated our preference for a Penn Avenue front entrance, and we worked pretty closely with the applicant through the process. Ultimately, there were several factors that led to the applicant seeking the principal entrance along Plymouth Avenue, and staff concurred that that was the appropriate location, and we also went to our Committee of the Whole, where I believe that was also the general consensus amongst the group. So first, as you noted, Commissioner Cronser is the location of the arterial bus rapid transit stop that would be along Penn Avenue. So here are kind of the drawings where you see the proposed station. The applicant's intended to create a separation, although still allowing views into the building. You go to the colored renderings, the picture on the very top kind of shows your Penn Avenue frontage, and those open windows that open in kind of into a gallery that is on the opposite side of the chapel, so it allows those views in and out of the building. Additionally, with the future LRT station, Plymouth Avenue is expected to have much higher levels of transit than it currently has presently. So with a combination of the location of the BRT stop, the fact that Plymouth Avenue is, it's not just a side street, it's also a community corridor, so we anticipate high levels of traffic. And then some of the preliminary plans that we've seen for the North Point Health and Wellness Center, the doors will actually match up street to street, so we'll be able to kind of complete that intersection with Urban League at the northeast corner, and then North Point coming down at the northwest corner. So those were the reasons why ultimately staff found that the proposed entrance was in the appropriate location. In this case, they're not seeking alternative compliance if they chose Plymouth or Penn, it still would meet the zoning code requirements. I can take any questions, and the applicant is also here to perhaps provide additional feedback if you would like.
All right, Commissioner Lukey Pierre?
Hi, Shannon, I had two questions. Number one, given that the entrance is as, I actually don't have a problem with it being along Plymouth, but given that it's there, is there been any talk about maybe having something to distinguish it as a primary entrance, since it kind of seems to be really flush with the building, and normally we'd want something to indicate, this is where you enter? This is my first question, and my second question is, could you just briefly go over, I know we gave a lot of feedback at Committee of the Whole, what changed since then? Because I can't tell if a whole lot is different, so anyway, if you could do that, it'd be super.
Okay, sure. So first, to kind of identify the principal entrance along Plymouth Avenue, they've provided the canopy that's consistent with the architecture of the structure, and it has the walkway up to the principal entrance. If we go back to the floor plan, here, actually, the picture at the bottom is the south elevation. I'll show you that first before the floor plan. So you can see that principal entrance is open with glass and windows. Off to your left are some of the office spaces, and then meeting rooms off to your right. So it is up here to be.
So there is a canopy, it's just hard to see on maybe our prints?
Yes.
Because it doesn't, okay.
You can tell a little bit on the rendering, and then...
Okay, that's super, yeah, I didn't, I couldn't...
A little bit on that picture on the top there. And then additionally, it enters into a vestibule that then staff would be able to enter, as well as anyone who is utilizing the funeral for service. So as I mentioned earlier, too, the Thor development is directly across the street to the east, and they are providing a large parking ramp, so we would anticipate that for large funeral services or multiple services occurring at the same time, we would expect some traffic to be parked at the ramp, and then crossing the street, and then accessing the funeral home through that Plymouth Avenue entrance. To your other question, Commissioner Lukey Pierre, not much has changed since we went to Committee of the Holes, but you can see that many of the staff recommendations reflect some additional landscaping and screening that we would find would bring the site further into compliance.
All right, Commissioner Cronser?
Shannon, can you go back to the east elevation?
Yes.
Can you kind of walk us through what's going on? Because my understanding is where the quote-unquote "gallery" is, that's basically a private hallway that's for staff only? And I have a question about what happens in the arrangement room?
I can answer your first question, I will try my best on the second. So if we go to the floor plan, you'll see that the chapels are kind of located here in the center of the building, so this does provide a corridor for people to kind of congregate and consolation, et cetera. So we anticipate the corridor not being used solely for staff, but for people that are attending service, et cetera. I really couldn't say what happens in the arrangement room with any sort of educated gas, actually. But the architect is here, and he is able to answer that question.
All right. At the moment, are there any further questions of staff? Commissioner Rockwell, do you have a question?
Yeah, was there any discussion, I recall, discussing at Committee of the Whole, trying to pull the building even a little bit closer to Penn, and I know that that requires variance, which is already being asked for, but was there a discussion of that after Committee of the Whole, and what was the outcome of those discussions, if yes?
We certainly had the conversation to bring the building again closer to. Ultimately, the applicant decided that due to the change in the elevation between the sidewalk level, and it is a little bit of a higher sidewalk where adjacent to the BRT station, it's a nine-inch curb instead of the normal city curb to allow for faster access. We actually met with Metro Transit to have some of those conversations, but because of that change in the grade, and then all, so it's about three feet higher up from the public sidewalk to the building, they wanted to allow for kind of a gradual separation of views, but still allow for those views in and out, and so in addition to the landscaping they have proposed, staff is recommending some additional ornamental trees along that side to kind of bring the scale a little bit more human scale, more pedestrian level.
Okay, thank you.
All right. If there are no further questions of staff, I will open the public hearing at this time, and I'll, I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first, so please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Thank you, council members. My name is David Witt with Mobilized Design Architecture, where they are the design architects on the Estes Funeral Chapel, working in collaboration with Collaborative Design Group and any other folks. To kind of address the entrance situation, I would point out, we went through extensive study and iterations and many concepts about various different locations for that entrance. It was not something made lightly, we'd study in depth with, in conjunction with the staff looking at that, and we just felt because, once we got further along, we also were getting more information about the design and location of the BRT station, it became quite apparent to us, there'd be quite a bit of conflict between where the entrance would be and the BRT station would be, as far as likely that the entrance would might be hidden by the BRT station, the kind of traffic conflicts between people coming to the funeral home and people waiting for their, for the transit, and point out that the BRT station takes the full depth of the sidewalk for circulation and the station itself, or, so it had been quite a lot of extensive kind of hardscape to make an entrance work at that location. The applicant, or not the applicant, but the Estes Funeral Chapel folks who'd be operating this facility, were concerned about having their entrance so close to the BRT station as it might be a kind of attractive nuisance for people wanting to use their facilities, a cold day waiting inside if that happens, if the funeral home happens to be open. So there's concerns about from a management and standpoint, a practical standpoint for the, for the funeral home folks. We were concerned about the grade change difference, and we need for a quite lengthy and extensive accessible ramp at that side, given our three-foot grade change. And also just mainly, mainly came about because of the BRT conflict between the BRT station and what we wanted to do. We felt that also with traffic, say 90% of the funerals we covered typically would be handled by the parking lot, our Estes folks tells us that would cover the most of it. Other times for a large funeral or visitation, they'd be parking in the parking lot across the street, they cross Penn and Plymouth, and with, and we have the entrance on Plymouth quite, I think feel quite close to that entrance. We also do have a canopy that extends out, so they can see, you see the handrailings, you see the canopy sticking out, you see the signage, so we felt that would be enough to draw people to that, to that location for the, for the entrance. An arrangement room is where they make the arrangements, with the people, the person coming in who's just lost a loved one comes into the arrangement rooms, they decide on the type of service, casket, you know, those types of things. It's where the grieving family first start to meet with the funeral director to plan the, plan the services. And there were, you know, it was a difficult process with us trying to be in an urban environment and meeting some of the urban design principles that we want to meet, but being respectful of the grieving process, that's also happening in this facility at the same time. There's people who are just lost loved ones, do they want to be smack dab on the street where someone could interact and look into it? So we're trying to find a respectful distance between the street and the building that allowed, you know, we wanted to have light, we want to have lots of light, it's a new concept in funeral home design, that much more light. You know, you won't see many funeral homes, there usually no windows. But it was important from an urban design standpoint and kind of the uplifting spirit from this building to have a lot of light. So we had to balance those kind of principles of additional light and views with kind of respect for the privacy of the people in the grieving process they might be going through in that space. So that's kind of how we arrived at the, you know, the Plymouth Avenue exit, entrance doors and some of the other elements of it. So anyone has questions for me? I would...
Are there any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Kronzer.
And we did talk at Committee the Whole, how to make the edge along Penn a little more urban. I think decorative fencing was thrown out.
We also...
Is there any fencing proposed?
There's not fencing, but we've increased a hard edge, like a, almost, I think, a foot concrete edging to really define that edge of the street, so a little more hard edge. Also, what we did is on the, as we moved towards the corner, we created a little more space between the curb and the, where you'd be crossing the street to accommodate additional traffic at that point. So we tried to define that edge with a raised concrete edge that leads to, it goes down Penn, turns the corner, goes down Plymouth to where our front entrance is. So it helps define where that entrance is and helps define a little more edge. And also, I think staff's recommendation is for additional trees on that side, which also might reinforce the edge there, too.
Clarifying question. This 12-inch concrete, it's basically a small retain wall or a ball curve?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Right. We don't want it high enough to sit on, but sufficiently high enough to create an edge. And you know, there's a, you know, the separation between public and semi-private space.
Okay. Any further questions of the applicant? If there are none, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? And seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, we have six applications before us related to this project. Are there any further questions, or would someone like to start us off with a motion? We have a motion and a second to approve items A through F. Commissioner Kronzer.
Just, I have a comment based on why I pulled this. I mean, I know it's hard fitting program into urban areas. I fully respect the desires and the needs to provide safe space for families. I mean, there's no doubt that this building faces a parking lot, fronts a parking lot. It's, you know, it addresses the parking lot. You know, the code requires a door to face the public street, and it does that. I think this, I'm fine with this entrance on Plymouth, although I think this building is really turning its back towards Penn Avenue, which is a little unfortunate, because there's a lot of public infrastructure and funding going into Penn Avenue, the county, the city, Metro Transit, you know. We're all focusing on Penn Avenue, and this entrance is off. I'm not sure what to do. It seems like an entrance on Plymouth is appropriate, although almost the entire length of this building along Penn is not going to see much, many eyes on the street. This gallery is a neat idea, but it's really not going to have a lot of people presence there. There's a bathroom in this family room. I just think, you know, maybe it is what it is, and this is the best we can do. So I'm not going to make any conditions to the site plan unless others join him in my concern, but I don't think it's a bad project. I just think maybe it could take one more step forward.
All right. Are there any other, is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Freeland?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Lupe Pierre?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Dagnan?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Nine zero.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item three, and our final item for discussion tonight is item nine. And Mr. Crandall is staff. Zoning code text amendment.
Good evening, Commissioners. Before you is a proposed zoning code text amendment dealing with our regulations related to fraternities and sororities. This amendment was introduced by Councilmember Fry's office in the Third Ward, and it is in response to a increased interest and participation in Greek life on the University of Minnesota campus in particular, which is currently the only institutional campus in Minneapolis that has a Greek community. However, our staff recommendations are citywide and do not preclude the possibility that there may be Greek uses established at other educational institutions in Minneapolis. A little bit of background, this is some data that was provided by the Greek community at the University of Minnesota, showing kind of the increase in interest and participation. In 2011, there were 6% of students participating in the Greek system. That jumped to 10% in 2016. 17% of undergrads joined a Greek group in 2015, so a marked increase there. This is some more graphic material showing sort of the trajectory of interest and participation. And then these are the specific changes that are being sought to the ways that we regulate fraternities and sororities currently today. The way that we do it now is that no fraternity or sorority, no new fraternity or sorority can be established on a zoning lot that did not previously contain that use. Additionally, there is a minimum lot area of 10,000 square feet and a bulk restriction limiting fraternities and sororities to two and a half stories. And additionally, a limit of 32 maximum persons served by the facility. That limit also limits onsite services to only members of the fraternity or sorority. So changes being sought are to allow for uses to be established on zoning lots that did not previously contain that use, to remove that limit of 32 persons, to allow onsite services to be used by members and guests, and to revise the building bulk and minimum lot area requirements to be similar to those of a community residential facility, which would reduce the minimum lot area from 10,000 to 5,000 square feet, and to increase the maximum height to four stories. This is a map, kind of just giving you some context of where the existing fraternities and sororities at the University of Minnesota are today. They're largely concentrated in the Dinkie Town and immediately to the north of the East Bank campus there. And then, of course, we also have a historic district related to fraternities and sororities that is regulated through the HPC. So I think I will conclude my presentation there. If we have questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Commissioner Magrino.
Hi, thanks. It looks like we got rid of the changes to the geographic restriction?
Actually, we are proposing to maintain the geographic restriction, which is that new fraternities and sororities need to be located within one-half mile of the education facility that they're associated with.
Did we, we talked about it a little bit at Committee the Whole, and did we sort of figure out, does that include just like any land owned by the University of Minnesota, or are we sort of drawing the line, drawing the line in university, or do we know?
We have a little more work to do probably in terms of how we would enforce that. I think, given that the University of Minnesota in particular has a somewhat fluid boundary, I think the way that we likely would establish that with the University of Minnesota or any other educational institution is to use the boundary of the facility at the time it was established as a use. So in the case of the university, that would be its kind of original land grants boundary, which I don't have today to show you, but we would need to determine that exactly in order to enforce that rule.
Okay. Just curious. Commissioner Rockwell.
Peter, can you, so we've got the maximum number of persons served not exceeding 32. What is, and we're, the proposal is to eliminate that. What does persons served mean? Does that mean like people living in the facility?
I believe it means residents, yes.
Okay. So, so the effect of eliminating that is just to leave it to the building code?
Yes, that's right.
Cool. Do we have an idea of what that translates to, or do you know what the building code is?
It would be a certain number of persons per room. I don't know the exact number offhand, but...
Okay. So it's limited by the number of rooms, not by the square footage?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so.
Okay.
That's a crazy sample.
Another building code issue.
Are there any further questions of staff? Hearing, Commissioner Lupe here.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. So did your slide say 17% of undergrads are members of fraternities and sororities at the U?
17%, I believe, of the incoming class in 2015.
Okay, that made it so, I was like, really? There's like 4,900 Greeks in there?
Yeah.
Really? I was like, kind of surprised, but okay. Super, just curious.
Okay. If there are no further questions of staff, I will open the public hearing on this item. And I think we have at least a couple people who would like to speak, so you can come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Lynn Swan. I live at 5100 West 82nd. I recently moved, so I have to stop and think here. Minneapolis 55437. I have with me today one of our fraternity alums who's been active in this. He is not going to speak. I do have two collegians who will speak very briefly, the president of Pan-Hellenic and the treasurer for interfraternity council. I want to thank you for the thoughtful conversation last month on this subject, and you really, those of you who were there, you really hit to the heart of the matter. And I think that you were talking about the regulations that are currently in place are very rigid regulations in comparison to any other type of facility that might bear any resemblance to this. So thank you for recognizing that. Also, you hit on the notion that this really was an ordinance change based on the University of Minnesota. And of course, there are no other fraternities or sororities, or fraternity or sorority houses in the city of Minneapolis right now, which is in your written material. But looking to the future, the idea was, let's use terminology that could apply across the city, meaning don't change what's in there right now. And we're happy as can be about that. That works out extremely well. These fraternity and sorority houses are not part of the University of Minnesota. They are independently owned. They are owned by the house corporations for each of the individual sororities and fraternities. Some of them have been around for over 100 years, meaning the property has been owned by the same entity for over 100 years. You don't find that very often. There is a whole layer of oversight that is responsible for each of these buildings. And of course, it starts with the city of Minneapolis, the state, the University of Minnesota, at least in terms of what happens there. But each of these fraternities and sororities has their own house corporation, they have their own officers in the sorority and fraternity, they are part of a larger organization on campus, they each are part of a national organization, all of which has oversight. And the national fraternities have a national organization, and the national sororities have a national organization. So the university is very supportive, first of all, of this idea of the growth. And in fact, President Taylor asked when he came, he said, what percentage are the Greeks at the University of Minnesota, and where do they rank in the Big Ten? And he was told, you saw the number there, it was 6%. What I don't think you saw was, we were last in the Big Ten, which was not an acceptable answer to him. And so a strategic task force was established in 2012 to say, what are the barriers to this growth? So the university looks at this community, the Greek community, as one that has a great deal of benefit to the University of Minnesota. And with that, I'd like to turn over briefly to our other two collegians who have just a moment of thoughtful words for you.
All right. Thank you. And please state your name and address.
Hi, so I'm Molly Hague, and I live at 915 University Avenue Southeast in my chapter house, Alpha Chi Omega. So like Lynn said, I'm the president of the Pan-Hellenic Council, which means I'm the president of all the sororities that have houses on campus, as well as a few other sororities that don't have houses right now, mainly because of this ordinance that's in place. So I just wanted to speak to the explosive growth that we've seen over the last couple of years. So I actually have the new numbers from spring, this spring. And so the interfraternity council just surpassed 1,800, and the Pan-Hellenic Council is at 1,784 members. So even in the last couple of months, we've seen some growth, and both councils have multiple chapters, national chapters knocking on our doors, wanting to come to campus, but we don't really have anywhere, anywhere for them to go. Obviously, with 17% of freshmen wanting to go through recruitment or joining chapters after going through recruitment, we're growing immensely. So we just would love somewhere to put these chapters, so we can continue to see our Greek community be successful.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and...
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for being here. Commissioners, we just have the one item before us, the zoning code text amendment. Would someone like to make a motion?
Standards for fraternities and sororities.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the text amendment. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Dagnan?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lupe Pierre?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Freeland?
Aye.
Nine zero.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item nine, and also concludes our meeting for today. We have Committee the Whole this Thursday. Our next meeting is March 20th, and we are adjourned.